All right, today is May third, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Sean Cogwell.
Mr. Cox, here. Ms. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Lohr, here.
Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Mundy, here.
Would you please stand for the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with introductions, and I'm gonna start at our far left table again. Ms. Jones, our district director, you sit as far away from me as you can. To her right, we have Felicity Tatum, and to her right, we have Debbie Berry, our school resources director. And as you look closer to me, Nate, the big guy at the end of our table, who is in his second year as a school board member. Jill Cox is immediately to his right. His right, yeah, my left. Jill Cox, a board member, in his final year unfortunately. Dr. Townsend, our superintendent, is to my meeting left. My name is John Laurel, I'm current board president since January. Leslie Miller, to my right, is our vice president. Autumn Hardy is a board member as well, and then we don't have Maddie yet, she should be here hopefully. And then Ryan Song at the end of our table is our treasurer for two decades. We appreciate him as well. With all that said, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, and ask for a motion to accept our agenda for tonight's meeting.
It's approved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Stone, call the role, please.
Mr. Banks, yes.
That's all right.
Yes.
Mr. Lohr.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Mundy.
Yes.
All right, item six, we're moving on to comments for the color regarding the agenda, I was dealing with those. So as we move to item seven, that would be our communication update, she's back to item seven now.
You don't need to touch it. But I did. But you didn't. Here I am, number seven. Okay, just a reminder about ways you can stay in touch with the school district, westcarrolltonschools.com, that is our website. You can access Facebook at West Carrollton City Schools or Twitter at WC City Schools. And I wanted to share this story with you, this is from our middle school softball game, and this came from their coach, Michaela Woody. As you know, she's a Pirate alumni, and she also is a teacher now at the high school, so she sent this email. She said, "I just wanted to share about our amazing middle school softball team. We played Tip City tonight, and they had a pink-out game to support one of their players' moms, who is on her tenth battle with breast cancer. After the game, our girls showed the best sportsmanship I've ever seen. They participated in a survivor's walk around the bases and showed lots of support. I do not have enough words to describe how proud I am of these girls. Definitely made me proud to be their coach and a Pirate. Though we lost, they stepped up to be great teammates and made new friends." I thought that was really an awesome story. Some other things that have been happening around the district. We have a group of bus drivers who recently participated in the regional rodeo competition. They compete with other bus drivers in the area, they test driving and written skills. You know, as you know, our bus drivers are constantly training. Even after they're hired, they still are learning, and we love that they participated in this. And students are learning on their feet in the classroom, and I wanted to just share this video with you. I think it's just gonna go past it, Kathy. Oh, wait a minute, maybe it's this one. Maybe not. Here we go. Except we have no sound. Okay, well, Mrs. Seiler is talking about wipe boards. And wipe boards encourage students to get out of their seats and stand up vertically and be thinking vertically. So they are working on a project right now where they are, and these were second graders, they're working to discover how many coins it takes. I'm sorry. It's on. But we don't hear any noise. Yeah, do that, because it's really better when it comes from them. I was all excited to share this with you. You don't want that one. And she is introducing a new math, almost like a game. So we have kids working on that, Mrs. Seiler, can you tell us what they're doing?
Sure, they're working on something called a vertical non-permanent surface. So they're vertical, standing up and down, which helps them think and work together, they can't be passive learners. The boards are vertical, it's non-permanent because they can erase it, so they can take risks, they can draw pictures, and then obviously surface for them to write on. So what we've given them is a task, so they're coming up with different combinations of coins that equal one dollar.
And I heard that they cannot use the same coin, no four quarters, no hundred pence. So you were talking about their collaboration skills too, tell me about that.
So one of our big district math schools right now is working together, having them talk about math. So we put them in small groups of two or three, and they have to work together. They actually only have one marker they can use, so that they're forced to work together, rather than splitting up the work and packing.
And this was all made possible by one of our local companies who we love, can you talk about that?
Yes, so I reached out to Don Tar, and they were able to donate enough money for us to buy a set of boards for all teachers two through twelfth grade, math teachers in our district. So this is a huge thing, and it's really gonna change our math classroom, it's awesome.
Well, it looks like they're having fun too.
We do like that. Do you guys like using the boards? What do you like about it?
I like that, because we all have the standards, and we all have barriers, and we like to learn, and they can learn from it.
Yes, we just stand there, you all get to talk about different ways to learn, you got anything else?
Yeah, I like about the board that we get to run boards. Like adding stuff more up, about that.
Do you like working with different groups?
Yes.
Okay, well, you can get back at it, I'm excited to see your answers. So again, these were second grade kids, and they were working in groups of two or three. And there were, I think, approximately five groups, they spaced them around the room so that they can't copy each other's answers. And it was pretty amazing for second grade, I thought, I was there half an hour at least. Kids were totally engaged with this, there was no squirming and wiggling, and it was really fun to see. And this happened to be in Mr. Seiler's classroom, he said he's been able to integrate these wipe boards using reading, writing, other lessons, so he was very pleased with them. Mrs. Seiler told me that she also introduced them at the middle school. And she was surprised, because she thought the middle school kids would be too cool to use the wipe boards, but she said, no, they absolutely loved it. So I don't think they have them all out to the teachers yet, they're still ordering going on, but we're very excited to have that happen. And something new. And also, Mrs. Seiler was also excited too, that the kids are interacting. And we all know what has happened in the last few years with COVID and so forth, that social skills have changed, and this was great. And they always work in a different group, it's all random, so that was nice. Okay, so, moving on, the intermediate school will be having their first art show, and that will feature artwork by fifth grade students on Tuesday, May sixteenth, from six to seven PM. And the band will be having trivia night Friday, May nineteenth, in the high school cafeteria. Doors open at six, and trivia starts at seven. There is an article on our website under district news, if you would like to buy your ticket early, you can get a bit of a discount. As always, watch for that information that's coming directly from your child's school, text, email, and phone, as well as Dr. Townsend's Thursday communication. As always, watch for Mr. Doyle, eyes up, phones down, go slow. Please, just be careful when you're driving in your neighborhood or on school property, watch for those little ones. And this is just a teaser, that I think Maddie might have some information about, so we're just gonna leave that at that. So I've met a lot of kids recently, one-on-one conversations, which has been a lot of fun. One of them being Maddie, and we were discussing what she wants to try and get started in the schools, and excited about that. But I also got to meet our valedictorian and our soliditorian this week. I got to talk with them, and if you two ladies would mind coming up, please, I have a certificate for you. And it's a Pirate Pride Award. Aya, this is for you. And Ashley, this is for you. And you also get a special coin, the West Carrollton Pirate Pride Coin, that you get to take with you, so you can always remember us. And then just stay right here, Mrs. Happner will be. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone, it is my honor that we have these two amazing students with us this evening. They are truly amazing, as Ms. Corbett said, we have our valedictorian, Aya Elharden, and our soliditorian, Ashley Williams. We are very, very proud of them, and you are not here to listen to me, you're here to listen to them. And they don't have speeches, but I did ask them to share three things with you. Their GPA, where they're gonna go to school, and what their focus is. And the third thing is a favorite memory of West Carrollton. So I'm gonna turn it over to Aya and make it away.
Okay, hello, everybody, it was nice meeting you all. So my name is Aya Elharden, I've been in the district since preschool, went to preschool twice, and kindergarten, and so forth. So my GPA is a five point one four seven, and then I'll be going to Cornell University to study biology, and then maybe double major in business. My focus is to hopefully get a dental degree and open up my own practice eventually. But favorite memory of West Carrollton, I mean, there's so many, but the mural club, that was a really great opportunity. We did a lot of amazing things there, I got to go, had the opportunity to go to a conference for NCCJ, and they helped us get a grant, which has provided us the opportunity to continue our club. But it's really brought us together, and our communities, and our students, and they really like our work.
Hi, everyone, my name's Ashley Williams. My GPA currently is a five point zero two five, and after I graduate, I'll be attending the University of Dayton, majoring in biology and possibly double majoring in computer science. And my favorite memory from West Carrollton is definitely being involved in the orchestra program throughout my whole life here, since I joined it in sixth grade, all the way to my graduation. Being able to be involved in the community in such a way, through like the extracurricular group, and also just in class every single day, it has just been an overwhelmingly positive experience for me, that I'm very grateful for. Thank you, everyone.
Again, I wanna congratulate these two, they are truly amazing, and what's really amazing to me is clearly they're very bright, with two of them above a five point oh, that's evident. But not only are they very bright, young ladies, they are also very involved, and they get out and they share, and they, you know, Aya talked about mural club, Ashley talked about being in the community, it's just, they are a well-rounded and a whole child, as we call them. So congratulations, ladies.
I wanna thank you both for speaking, it isn't easy to get up, even though there's only fifteen or so of us in here, to get up and speak in public, and so appreciate you doing that, congratulations to both of you, on what I'm sure will be tremendous futures for both of you, and we're just grateful that you gave us the last eleven, twelve years of school. And I know you're glad to be moving on to college, even though growing up, as all of us here who are still doing it can tell you, it's a challenge of its own. So I know you guys will handle it, and we really appreciate you taking the time to come here and celebrate your tremendous accomplishments. Correct me, but I don't think we've ever had both the valedictorian and soliditorian with fives, so that's a first. They just keep, they do just keep on climbing that ladder, I don't, it's amazing. So we also have the senior spotlight. Mr. Ivory, you wouldn't mind coming up and take your lap for us, and introduce these two students to us?
So, let's see, both of our student athletes for our senior spotlight are competing today. Seth was up at Troy for the MBL tennis meet, he was originally supposed to be here. And then Ashia Maddox is at a track meet in Lebanon right now, so great, great choosing by me, but when you, you know, kind of know these kids, they truly deserve it. So I have a little bit of an athletics update, and I, the senior spotlight's at the end, because I was hoping Seth would come in here, but he's obviously had a long day, it was really windy and cold up there, so. What's been new since I last presented, we had last night at nine o'clock, Leaguewide did a football showcase, actually had some kids get offered last night, based on just doing some drills out there, and then film that the coaches had seen ahead of time. So, you know, going through three coaches, some of them had three coaches, so it's tough, you know, it makes the recruiting path a whole lot harder, but this is something that they started last year, and it's great for our league and kids to kind of get some exposure. So here's our kids out there, it was football weather, it was about forty-something, and windy and rainy, so everything we play in normally. So yesterday we had signing day, Ashia's there on the right, she's going to Berea College for track and basketball. And then Jake Curry on the left is going to Wittenburg for football. Both have kind of had, you know, Ashia has countless records for us, track and basketball. And Jake is kind of the classic example, if he had some injuries and stuff, but he kept his grades way, way up high, and you know, by the time he had a healthy year, they came calling for him, and he really took it and ran. Ms. Corbett's covered this one already. No, it's all right, it's great, and it's just one of those things where, you know, we don't really, I don't, I'm not in the middle school building, so when we get something like this and have kind of the crossover with a teacher that's a coach, it makes me even more proud just to see that we will have some well-rounded student athletes coming up. New achievements, this was, this happened after the last time I presented, so Kylan, who is a sophomore, he impressed a lot last night, because he's a football player too, but he was a special mention all-state, which is essentially fourth team all-state in Division One in Ohio, is very competitive, so it was great to see him recognized. So he'll be going up on our plaque outside our gym. National Student Athlete Day, we had a hundred and thirty-nine student athletes that were cumulative three point oh or higher. That includes band, guard, winter guard, Pirates, and I believe simple math was about thirty percent of our student athletes, so, you know, we have a lot of teams that are well over this at all times, and it's great. So, you know, we can kind of use this as a benchmark going forward. This was, this happened in the past month, so we have a new four-by-four relay team, and Ashia is on that one, with China Marzetti, who's a senior. Brooklyn Williamson, who's, I think I saw her in four different sports this year, and then Serena D. Foster, who is a track athlete, but also a cheerleader as well. So senior spotlights, I chose, I mean, this picture's perfect for Ashia, and when I was talking to her about it this week, you know, this is everything that she was about with the team, is just the intensity, and you can kind of see the focus. And we did a little, I posted this on the athletics website, just kind of bio of Ashia, you know, great student athlete. Everything like, I won't cover them all. So, let's see if this, uh-oh, it's gonna do that again, sorry. So we just kind of asked them some basic senior, you know, senior questions, as far as what is kind of your legacy of being at the school, you know, what did you really focus on, what do you have going on in the future, and that kind of stuff, so. Is it just?
I like how, or like, especially with basketball, like, I can't even watch that, I didn't know that you were attacking. But like, like working every day and every season, like, together, everybody was trying to build a rapport. It was fun, like, going from a two oh twenty feet to eighteen and six, and I remember last year was pretty good too.
So she'll be the first person to tell you that it's not just her, you know, they had a great, a great group of girls that were ready to work hard and everything like that, and did a great job of kind of, you know, buying in, and it really accelerated, and you know, it's exciting to see, so. And that's just basketball, I mean, she's a great track athlete as well, so there's, sorry, this is so difficult, I thought it was just gonna be a...
Yeah, it just...
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I like, I like how, or like, especially with basketball, like, I can't even watch that, I didn't know that...
We should know the problem.
Um, I'm most proud of that I could affect a lot of my teammates and their mindset, because at first, like, you had a lot of people that were just like, oh, here, oh, we're, 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 but like, by the end of like, my senior year, everybody was like, oh, you're on purpose, you're like, you're not even good, like, all this and all that. Even for track, like, everybody just wanted to work every day, instead of just, oh, we're like, just, you know. Um, I'm most proud of that I could affect a lot of my teammates. Um, for underclassmen, just trust the process most of the time, work hard, do what you gotta do, but have fun after, like, school, it's school, it's gonna be school, it's gonna be learning, but do what you gotta do, and get it better. Um, for underclassmen...
Well, anyways, I asked her about her experience with CTC, because, you know, we have so many student athletes that we don't really see walk in the halls, so you kind of have to get to know them at the games and everything like that, and a lot of times they're mentally locked in and stuff, so you really only see the competitor. So it's great to kind of hear their stories, but basically, her CTC answer is, you know, she's already done so many of her requirements and stuff, that now she's put herself in a position where, you know, college is gonna be a little bit shorter path and less expensive and everything like that, just because she took advantage of some of the great opportunities we have here. So Seth is, Seth is in the group of our tennis slash soccer players that have really kind of transformed our boys soccer program and tennis. Doing a great job with, you know, there's, there's a group of them, of all these guys that are all, you know, always together, and it's all great grades. Very proud of what they've been able to do, and Seth was a big part of kind of the success of these teams, so. Ironically, both student athletes' favorite subject is math, so, let's, hopefully, these are...
I definitely see more people attending, like, offseason workouts and everything, and I see upperclassmen definitely take more accountability, telling them that, like, the underclassmen come more, and tell them the benefits out of it, and why they should be doing it, stuff like that.
And that's one of the things that I really want to tell our seniors right now about how proud I am about kind of the increased accountability, you know. When, when I first got here, how, four years ago or whatever, there, I didn't really see that. But now it's, you know, you go to their footsall things on Sundays, and there's thirty kids in the gym. We actually talked today at the MBL about doing a middle school soccer, club soccer, to kind of help with numbers at the high school and everything like that, and Mr. Crissick has explained that there is interest in it, so, you know, we'll be looking to do that, and that is all possible, because we do have this class of seniors that really increased the accountability and made it fun. You know, they work hard, but they have fun.
I definitely see more people attending, like, offseason workouts and everything, and I see upperclassmen definitely... The advice I'd give to our classmen would probably be just go to class, and like, stay on task and do your work, because if you don't, then I'd be able to play, and that can affect the school or the team. So I'd probably say, stay on task, and do your best.
And that's kind of what both of them said, as far as the advice is just, just die in, work hard, and really just do your work, and that's, that's kind of our seniors that have put themselves in positions to potentially receive some kind of scholarship, if it's academic or athletic, it all starts with grades. And that's, that's why we chose these two student athletes, because they do a great job of representing, you know, everything that we want out of our student athletes.
The advice I'd give to... My favorite fourth memory is probably when I got my first goal as a senior, to tie the game against Covington. That was probably my favorite fourth memory, and then senior night too, because you're just like, all your people you played through the whole year were spent pre-graduated senior, and it was just a good time.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you watch any of our boys soccer team this year, they had fun, and they worked hard, and that's, that's really what you wanna see. Just to remind, I mean, everything on here is on our athletic website, Twitter account. I always remind people that with the weather changes and everything, it's just been crazy, so Twitter is where we have all of our reschedules and the most up-to-date information, because it is changing every minute, this April and now May, first three days of May, so. That's why we love it, and please reach out if you have any questions or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, appreciate you highlighting those two seniors for us. I don't know if this will continue next year, but I hope it does, I mean, taking the month of May, just honoring some seniors for probably many more years than what I've been sitting here, and certainly invited our top two GPA winners, the valedictorians, the soliditorians, to attend these, so we can celebrate you, and I think that's terrific as well. But just to, to Ms. Happner, if I could, just encourage the next meeting, I won't be here on the seventeenth, I have to, I have to be at CTC's graduation, but if you would, maybe pick up two students, we have an... I have to, I have to be at CTC's graduation, but if you would, maybe pick up two students you haven't already that you feel would be worthy of an honor like this. We'd love to see that happen in both May meetings, at least this year, and hopefully whoever's sitting in my seat next year will keep this going. But I, I think it's a good idea to, to give at least four seniors a chance to, to be kind of highlighted and spotlighted in, in front of, you know, friendly community like this. So I, normally we're at, at item nine and I don't, I'm not trying to run anybody off, but if our guests that we did invite here do want to step away, you can't say anyone, you're welcome to do that, we won't be offended or anything. But it'll take just a second to do, and we'll move on then. All right, we can clear a room in this school, we'll get into that. We'll move on to item nine, your discussion item, Dr. Towns.
So the policies I'm reviewing tonight are the second read and you will take action on these later in the meeting. Mr. Sloan also has a policy, but his is the first read tonight. So policy two one one four, meeting state performance indicators, they're going from an A to F report card to a five-star rating. Policy two two seven one, college credit plus, this allows military families who leave or withdraw to continue without financial penalty. Policy two four one two, home band instruction, just changing the five hours a week in the verbiage. Policy three one two oh point oh nine, four one two oh point oh nine are rescinded and being combined into policy eight one two oh. Volunteers, and they need to have people activity permits if they support athletic activities and we already do that. Policy fifty three ten, health services, it's reflecting current state law. And it's making sure that we keep an eye out on students that have concussions. Policy fifty four sixty, graduation requirements. The graduation requirements as of today are for the class of twenty twenty-three and beyond. We don't know how long that will be. Policy fifty six ten, it's changing the removal, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion of students related to students who move into the district. They are offered an opportunity for a hearing if they've been denied at another school or expelled from another school. We already do that. Policy sixty three twenty-five, procurement federal grants, just recognizing that not all federal grant contracts are subject to the Davis Bacon Act. Policy eighty three ninety, animals on district property. There is some structured options if needed for therapy or comfort animals. Policy eighty four hundred, school safety, the model threat assessment plan, it was released in September twenty twenty-two. We have teams at every building and everyone has been trained. And actually, it's been adopted by the state. Policy eighty four twenty, emergency situations at school. It reflects on current law and administrative code four five oh one, five one oh one. And that includes the definition of a tornado watch. Policy eighty four sixty-two, student abuse and neglect, it's revised and it's related to Aaron's law. And we have to include age-appropriate training K-12 to students on child sex abuse prevention and to staff. Policies seventy five forty, seventy five forty oh one and seventy five forty oh two. Our best practices that involve with state law and they're related to our website accessibility based on the ADA. We have a company that takes care of that for us to make sure we are in compliance. Policies seventy five forty oh three, seventy five forty oh four, eighty three hundred, eighty three oh five, eighty three fifteen and ninety seven zero zero oh one. The first ones are regarded to acceptable use. Also, policy ninety seven oh oh one is advertising and commercial activities. Making sure that we advertise appropriately on our website. Policy sixteen fifteen, thirty two fifteen, forty two fifteen, fifty five twelve, seventy four thirty four and ninety one sixty is a tobacco-free campus. There's a variety of cost-free evidence-based resources to support curd nicotine users and that includes cigarettes, smokeless, e-cigarettes, et cetera, to help them quit. And we have a list of different curriculums that we can use. We also have a list for adults who are interested and.
That was a second read for those, which, well, we'll vote on soon. And then Mr. Sloan is going to share policy sixty four twenty-one with us.
Sixty four twenty-three is regarding the district credit cards. And we recently added a speedway card for the transportation office to, to use. So on an as-needed basis, it's controlled by the transportation supervisor. And our policy is, is specific in terms of identifying specific jobs, positions, people that can use credit cards. So we added, we added M to, to formalize, to letting the transportation office staff, bus drivers, mechanics use a speedway card if they had to use it on a long trip, for example. That's, that's the only change to the credit card policy.
And that's first read, so we'll, we'll hear that again in two weeks.
I have questions for the policies. It, this doesn't seem crazy. So these policies, I don't want to hit it on the table, but. That's a lot of pages of it, Austin, we took a long time to read. Yeah, because, man, there are a lot there. But it was a lot of really good information that I was, I just had a few questions about it. So for fifty four sixty, which I don't know if you have the same page numbers I have, it's on the bottom of page sixteen. The, the question I had, it, it talks about how no student shall, shall be required to remain in school for any specific number of semesters or other terms in the student, if the student completes their part curriculum early. We always have that, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, I just, that was one of those. And then, and fifty five twelve, which for me is on page twenty-one. There is a interesting, where is it? There is a, a curriculum called My Life, My Quit, Youth Secession Program. And that's just one of those, it's like an option of the curriculum?
Yep, they gave us four, like six different free curriculums for students, four for adults. And then two different areas for just general information, that's from Ohio Health Department.
Wow, and then that would be done through the health class?
It could be.
And then, I'm almost done. Seventy five forty, that's on page thirty-seven, at least on my.
Technology.
Yes, that's technology. And so the students, they can't use Chromebook for Instagram, Twitter, Reddit, things like that, right?
Not today. No, we, we work really hard, so you've heard us talk about our software that we use to monitor what kids are on.
Yeah.
So our technology person does a great job at trying to block those things. So if we see them pop up in our software, we do address it.
That's good. I, I mean, of course, I've never been a social media guy, so like, to try to restrict that is always helpful because, you know, kids aren't on social media. I sound like an old person, okay. I also wanted to mention the seventy five forty oh three with the AI tools. I don't know if you guys seen it much, but they are some, I mean, it's incredible what you can do with them. So I'm happy that we are, you know, trying to curb the abuse of a system like that because, I mean, it is just crazy what AI can do. So I'm happy that we are still trying to use the brains with our kids other than just give it to some system to, you know, do it for us. Because technology's just been crazy. So I just had to comment on that one. And then on seventy five forty oh four, which on, for me, it's on page fifty. So principals do not have the authority to unblock access to websites then? So that's just from you guys, and I'm sure, that's good to know, just wondering. Okay, almost there, moving on. It is policy number eight thousand four hundred and twenty, I think it's on page seventy-two for me. It's about the, the emergency situations. So it mentions something about six fire drills and like a bunch of tornado drills during like those peak months.
Yes, they're required by law and we have to report them to the state, so we report them every.
So those are student drills, like where the students have to like go out and go to.
Oh, building, tornado, to our shelters.
That's good, because I, you know, of course, I don't remember all the drills that, I mean, but I'm like, that's a lot, that's a lot.
I want to say it's actually less than. I want to say it was nine or ten.
Wow, because I'm like, of course, that's fantastic, because the kids definitely need to know what's going on, you know, but, yeah, when I was looking at that. That's a lot of drills that, but that's good, just in case. And I think last but not least, eighty four sixty-two is on page seventy-five for me. What instructions will, like, would be told to K-six for annual, like, just like to speak out and.
We don't have curriculum on this yet, so. All we've been told is it's supposed to be age-appropriate. So when you're talking K-two or K-one, what do those discussions look like? We don't have that yet.
Yeah.
So I'm sure it'll be in the health curriculum, it's just not available to us yet.
Yeah, because that's gonna be a very tough one to deal with, because you know, that's, those are real situations too. It shouldn't be, but they are real, so. I, I hope that, you know, we can navigate that, that's best for the kid. And, you know, that could be healthy, because I know that's gonna be a tough one, tough bridge across, you know.
Well, and for the adults, the curriculum should be presented by law enforcement or legal counsel. So hopefully when we have our training, we'll get more information.
And actually, that was my last question, would that be presented on like a QPT day, like where?
If it's for administration, not necessarily, if it's for the teachers, probably.
Okay, because the, I mean, that would be something, I don't know if we are able to, because I, I would be interested in, I mean, just observing, you know, and just kind of see how that's going.
A lot of our training is done online, so they don't have a module yet, so if that happens, it might show up there, but it just don't happen.
Well, that's all the questions I have, thank you for the barrage.
All right, okay, so moving on to item ten, and Mr. Sloan.
I asked the board to approve the minutes of regular meeting held on April twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, looking for a motion and a second.
Salute.
Mr. Sloan?
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mindy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
All right, item eleven, Devin.
Good evening. Item eleven, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel items A through. M? Item eight through M.
All right, can I have a motion and a second for you?
Salute.
Any comments from A through M there, Mr. Sloan?
Item F was exciting, and those are our first teachers that we hired for the upcoming school year. Quite sure, well, there are two that I'm excited about all of them, really, but two in particular, there are two, two graduates there. One, Kayla Northcap, went here from kindergarten through twelfth, graduated, graduated from Wright State. And Shawna Whaley, who was a family member, I would say. So I wanted to welcome those four.
It looks like Shawna has her master's, all right.
She does, she does.
Letter in, so our summer work crew, we raised the rates to fifteen dollars per hour after researching. All of the local districts, it still puts us in the middle of the pack, but we can't find summer help at the rates we were paying before. So I would ask to mention that.
Anything else, Mr. Bear? No. Mr. Sloan, if you would, hold on.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mindy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right, item twelve, back to you, Devin.
Item twelve, the superintendent recommends that the board approve personnel item A.
Sure, no way it's too weird. I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
All right, any comments?
No, just preparing, normal football coaches and track coaches, just getting around and some adjustments were made for track because obviously the season is actually coming to an end and football. One of, two of those guys actually will be coaching football as well.
Right, I know this is, I apologize, because this is backtracking just a second, and I know that we just voted to approve the hiring of a couple of new teachers, but any, just summary real quick on how many more teachers we need to, to hire before the next school year?
We should be right now about seven that we need, positions that we need to fill. But that changes all the way up until July.
Subject to change.
Subject to change.
Looks like seven is a pretty good figure.
Yes.
Mr. Sloan, if you would, call the role.
Mrs. Miller?
I'm staying.
Mr. Mindy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes. All right, item thirteen, we're gonna have a, Dr. Towns.
I'd like to recommend that the board approves the lunchroom prices for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year as listed below.
Motion and second, please?
Salute.
Second.
Now, it looks the same to me, it's not a, I recognize these prices, since I do pay this occasionally. Maybe it's got to change, but I wish I could pay this instead of what Liberty University is going to charge me, so. Editorial complex, not necessary, I suppose, but any comments about this, it was the same.
It's the same, yeah, we just chose not to raise the prices going into next year. We feel we have enough folks having a hard enough time paying, so Tina and I discussed it and we're keeping them the same.
Anybody else have any questions about the lunch prices? Mr. Sloan, please?
Mr. Mindy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Wild?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, item fourteen, and back to Mr. Bear.
Exactly, exactly, normally I have my copy, because I print it, I have the general copy, it doesn't have my name on it. That's what's.
That's your job description?
Exactly, yeah, it's my job.
Just to let you know, this is the last one with your name on it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Superintendent recommends that the board approve job description number three fifteen. West Carrollton City School Social Worker as presented.
Have a motion and a second for this?
Salute.
Second.
Comments from you or Dr. Townsend?
A social work position is a return position that we haven't had for, how many years, would you say? A decade at least? Decade plus. However, we see a need for it, the obvious need for social work. Most, most, many times we tasked our teachers and principals to do duties that would be better fulfilled by the work of us. would be better, uh, fulfilled by the work of a social worker, um, and a licensed social.
I have a question as well. More questions. Um, so what's the difference between the social worker and like a school counselor?
Yeah.
Cause I, when I was reading this, I'm like, it just seems like very much like a counselor to me.
Yeah. School counselors are, are limited on what they can do. When, when we look at , uh, situations with child abuse, when we're looking at situations with county services, uh, they can navigate those, that bureaucracy a lot better than, than we can. They also have permission to do things that a school counselor doesn't. So.
And the other thing, the schools, social workers primarily, the work they're doing is usually geared toward parents in the community versus a school counselor who's working with students. Their focus is on students.
So would their, uh, would their salary kind of reflect that? Like, is their salary?
It's more in line with the teacher's salary.
Oh, okay. Um, and because I know when we were, uh, especially when the parents were talking and just talking to some of the kids in the district, I mean, they wait so long to see a counselor in the high school especially. So I was just wondering if this would, uh, kind of help alleviate a lot of work for the counselors. So, you mean, they can, you know, get more help, I guess. It seems like the counselors might need a little bit of relief if they are so overwhelmed with the amount of students trying to come in and see them and be a part of, you know, what's going on there.
I agree with you. I mean, that, that's an issue that we continue to have. Um, but as you know, those, those students are coming from homes. And, and this is sort of a bridge between that, as Melissa was saying. Uh, when we have those conversations with parents, um, this would be more of a liaison that can extend services to help families outside of the school as well as the students in the school. So a counselor is limited to what they can do as far as working with a student and the faculty.
I see. Well, hopefully this might open up the door, um, to help maybe the counselors as well have more opportunities or maybe even add an additional counselor if needed to help alleviate the students and their stresses on trying to get in to, uh, cause it seems like these kids are pretty stressed out trying to have someone to talk to. And it seems like the counselor, especially when I was in school, was definitely the person I would go to. And I didn't really have too many troubles reaching my counselor, but it seems like now more than ever, they've been having a lot of trouble reaching them. So hopefully that might be something we can look forward to in the future or maybe, uh, have a work session on, I mean, talking to some of the counselors or some, somebody to see what we can do to kind of help alleviate that stress.
Right.
We meet tomorrow, what, Friday? Do you anticipate a couple hires this, this just one person we're thinking of? Or you got that for yet?
Right, right now it's just one.
You said it's a grant?
We were a grant.
Great. That's awesome. Well, all right. So I think we're ready to go. Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
All right. Item fifteen, Dr. Townsend.
I'd like to recommend that West Carrollton Board of Education grant an administrative contract to the following administrator for the period of time indicated.
All right. Looking for a motion and a second, please.
Salute. Second.
All right. Well, come on up, David. You're gonna introduce yourself. So I'd like to welcome David Conger. Um, he will be replacing our E C C principal, Mrs. Sheeman, who is going into retirement. And we are very happy that you are here. So will you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, David Conger, my sixteen-year education, uh, been a principal in CPS since in public schools for the past four years. Opportunity to be a part of the West Carrollton team is very exciting for me. I'm very humbled to be here with all of you this evening. Um, looking forward to kind of hitting the ground running and getting started and really seeing, um, helping our kids grow with their capabilities. So thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm very excited.
Welcome, sir. All right. Uh, anybody else have any questions about this before we go? All right. Mr. Sloan, call the robe, please.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Hope so.
All right. We go to item sixteen. And that is Dr. Townsend as well.
Uh, thank you. I need a motion and a second, um, that the board adopt as presented the proposed policies of the West Carrollton Board of Education. And the whole list I read earlier.
This is our second read. We'll build on some of the motions.
Salute. Second.
All right. Um, anybody have, I think Nate got the questions out of the way there earlier, but, um, Mr. Sloan, if you would, call the robe, please.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mundy?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
All right. Um, moving on, we do not have Maddie with us. She did email me. Uh, that girl, she's not missing very many meetings at all, but when she does, she does let me know. So I really commend her for her good communication skills. Um, I think she may have planned to be here because her email was after six o'clock, but, um, she's not gonna be with us at this point. Wouldn't be any sense in showing up at seven o'clock anyway. But, um, did want to just mention two quick things about, um, student reps in general. We, uh, unfortunately, at least at this point, did not have anybody apply to be a student rep the next year, uh, to join her. Um, that's a first. A little disappointed about that, but, uh, we do have Maddie for one more year. She'll, she's already agreed to, to stay on board with us. I don't know what this P-four K thing was. Uh, she hasn't told me that yet, so I thought I was in the loop with her, but apparently not as well as you guys are. Um, but anyway, so I'm sure we'll hear about that here in, in the coming weeks. Um, as well, at least she has a name, so that's good. That's what that is. We also had, uh, the, the building here that we're in tonight. Uh, we were here Saturday with a presentation that was provided to, uh, we had four state board of education representatives here. We have an E S D rep and a couple of people Zoom with us. All three super, uh, superintendents were here with us. Uh, Dr. Townsend, Ian Northmont, and Centerville's superintendents, whose names I probably won't, Mr. Thomas, is that Northmont? And then I won't remember Centerville, but I apologize, Centerville, if you're listening, uh, to this. But, um, they were here in, in person as well to share their thoughts on having student reps in the district, uh, as well. It went, it went really well. Lasted about an hour. Uh, we had good support. We got our IT person here helping us with, I'm sorry, if some of this audio issue was our fault. I apologize because we were in this room Saturday and, and, uh, we didn't, I sw, I promise we didn't really mess with knobs or do anything really bad.
Not bad over there at all.
But, uh, we didn't. But some, just our energy in here messed something up, I guess. But, uh, we certainly appreciate the effort, the kids. We had, uh, five of the student reps here. Uh, this is just a great facility to have, to be able to hear and have, you know, we had one of these, uh, year and a half ago at, at one of elementary's, uh, one of Centerville's elementary schools, and it was an audio nightmare. And this just went so much better. And, you know, it just went so much smoother. So we really appreciate the district just letting us host this. And all the kids really enjoyed it. So, and uh, one last thing, one of the students from Centerville brought Panera Bread breakfast here. And I mean, he just brought way too much for the crowd we ended up having. But I really appreciate him doing that. And if anybody ever needs breakfast, Jacob Bieber's got a call. He took care of that. All right. So committee reports? Does anybody have any, any committee reports? All right. Move on then. So comments from Dr. Townsend?
Thank you. Um, first of all, I would like to say the student reps did an excellent job. They were very gracious to have it here and loved the facility. And I will tell you, I was told, it's so much better than last year. So out of the mouth of kids, you have to love it. Um, I'd like to congratulate our Val and Sal on their achievements. And I'd also like to congratulate the seniors who were showcased in the senior spotlight tonight.
Val and Sal? Is there any, are we gonna start Sal? That's easier than saying the full word. Um, all right. Uh, Mr. Sloan, I think you brought something for us. And assuming you were gonna chat with us, I'm gonna give you the mic.
Uh, first of all, I just wanted to say welcome to, uh, Mr. Conger and, uh, best wishes to Mrs. Sheeman, um, she is, in her upcoming retirement. Um, I gave you a three-page handout, uh, regarding the state budget, um, process that's going on here in Ohio. Um, so this is for the new two-year budget that starts July one. So, um, so back around the end of January, the governor submitted his proposed budget for the next two years. And then the next step is for the House Representatives to, to craft their version of the budget. And, um, maybe about, about two weeks ago, they finalized their version of budget, which is House Bill thirty-three. And now the budget bill is in the Senate. So the Senate will be putting together their version of the proposed budget, um, through mid-June or so. And then once they're done with that, then a conference committee will be formed, um, in probably late June to kind of come to a reconciliation between the governor and the House and the Senate. And then that budget, um, that was, uh, that budget, you know, kind of like a reconciliation, um, where the three, the three groups kind of, um, come to an agreement on what the, what the budget's gonna be. And then the budget, um, is hopefully in place by, by July first and that, for the next two years. On the second page, the second page is just, uh, just a summary. This was prepared by, um, a finance guy at O D E, just kind of comparing in terms of public education, comparing the governor's budget at the top and then the House budget is at the bottom half of the sheet. Um, just looking over on the far right side, um, the governor's budget had a, about a seven percent and a two percent increase for, for a total of nine percent increase in, in funding over the next two years. And then down the bottom half on the right side, um, the House proposed budget is eleven percent and three percent, so a total of fourteen point four. So, um, in the down, down to bottom, um, you know, the House puts, the House budget puts two point five billion of additional dollars in education over the next two years, which is almost a billion dollars more than the governor's budget. So, so the, the House budget is putting about five hundred dollar, five hundred million dollars more per year for the next two years into the K-12 budget. So, um, that is, that's really good news, um, for K-12 education across Ohio. Um, if it stays, if it stays in place, maybe, we've been talking the last couple of years about, I mean, we, but everybody across the state of Ohio in terms of how good a financial shape, uh, the state of Ohio is in. So it's good to see the House, um, deciding to, making their pitch that the fact that the state's in good shape, um, that money should be funneled down to K-12 education. Um, so then the next step obviously is, you know, is to see that the Senate doesn't come in and mess it up. Or, or the days, you know, their budget at least has the K-12, um, funding that, that the, that the House has, has proposed. And then on the third page, um, so I shared this, I think at our March fifteenth meeting, um, so the top line, November twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. Um, so these are the numbers across, um, from this current year out through twenty-six, twenty-seven in terms of the numbers that were our forecast for state funding. And then the line below that is, um, February fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. Like if I, we were doing the forecast back in early March, um, I would have been using those numbers. Our, our state funding got increased by about three hundred thousand. Um, it was basically during the winter. And, and then, uh, when I prepared, when I showed, shared it for you last time, I shared it with you right after the governor had released his budget. And those numbers are, are in the middle there. Um, if the governor did have like a, a dedicated funding stream for SROs, for resource officers, um, which would have been about three hundred twenty-five thousand for us. But even, even including that three twenty-five, we were still only looking at a two point eight and a zero point seven percent increase for the next two years. And then the bottom part is the House version. And as you can see, um, you know, the, the House version would, you know, it would be great news for us if that stayed in place as we'd be looking at a ten percent and a three point one percent increase. And, and the very, uh, very bottom line on this page shows that, you know, for our district, you know, the House version would give us about a one point five million more, um, for next year compared to the governor's proposal. And then that number would jump up to about two point one million dollars for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five compared to the governor's budget. So, um, it's, you know, all state organizations have really, they've had great things to say about the House budget. Um, and, um, as I said, we just, we just wait and see the next two months and hope that the, the Senate budget is at least as good as the House budget and we'll go from there.
So if my math is right, just to put this in perspective, when we're talking about two million dollars, that's like six or seven meals if we could raise in tax revenue, right? About three hundred thousand mil, three fifty?
Um, I mean, right now we are, uh, right now our valuation's around four hundred seventy thousand. So
We're higher.
But the next year, you know, with the property value
Five mils.
Uh, so ballpark, yeah, we can just call it about equivalent. And when you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five number of two point one million, I mean, we can call it, we can call it ballpark, additional four mils.
Right. Okay. Yeah. I forget the property values that go up, so they're gonna be good too. All right. Um, anybody else have any questions about his, uh, comments or if we move on to board comments?
Oh, I will say Jordan Fishback is one of our school psychologists who spent just a short time with us here. She's moving about an hour and a half up the freeway, getting married this summer and moving up the freeway. So that's the reason for her departure. She has done an excellent job for us and we wish her the best as well.
Well, along with the shoes, I don't think you'll be interested in wearing the princess costume, but we'll take anything that you, in any costume you have, will fit right in with the E C C. But congratulations, and I look forward to working with you, um, in curriculum. And I just want to say congratulations to Aya and Ashley, amazing GPAs. And then of course, they're gonna have an amazing, um, career post secondary. And then just to all the twenty twenty-three seniors, both, all the accomplishments that they have achieved, both athletically and academically. Very excited to be at graduation in a few weeks to, to celebrate them.
All right. Uh, we will finish up with board comments. And we have nothing after that. The work session we're executing, so we will be, we'll be done in a couple of minutes. Nate will start with you.
All right. Couple, couple minutes, more like a couple hours, let me get started. Um, Gary, I'm getting bullied here. What's going on? Well, you know what? Fair, fair, that's fair. Um, I, I want to get started with the quote this time. That's by Henry Ford. It's, uh, whether you think you can or you think you can't, you're right. Um, of course, that kind of goes down to our, was it Val and Sal?
Val and Sal.
The Val and Sal. And all of our sports people, but especially Seth and, uh, Asha Yen. And, you know, it's just incredible that, I mean, these kids have done amazing things and they had that mindset that they're going to do that. And, um, I am just so excited to see where they go and amazing things that they're gonna do, not just for our community, but wherever they go and the communities that they will be in. And of course, uh, David, congratulations. And I know you'll be, uh, following suit and amazing things that you're gonna be doing as well. So I am so excited for everybody and all the changes that's going on. And changes is hard for most people, but I absolutely love it because that means other people will get to share the amazing things that come from West Carrollton, which is always the best, um, always the best. And then, uh, of course, you know, raising it to fifteen dollars an hour, you better be working for us this summer, you know? Whoever out there, if you need to work, fifteen bucks an hour, that's not, that's not nothing. You know, that's good money. That's good money. So, uh, be out there, get some work done. And, uh, of course, there's a lot of committees going on next week. So, uh, I'm definitely having an update on, what is that, the seventeenth? I think it's the seventeenth, the next warding, you know? So you're gonna be hearing another Wolf speech probably about the committees because we have a bunch going on. So, other than that, other than that, I think we're good. So, uh, yeah. Thank you.
Uh, congratulations to all our spotlight students tonight. Um, what a great accomplishment. By our Val and Sal.
Sorry.
Five, five point plus is a, is just huge accomplishment. And then to hear they're gonna both try to double major, which is amazing. Um, welcome to David. Uh, I abstain from the vote because I have known David a long time. Uh, we served hospice of David's camp pathways. We served hospice of David's camp pathways. And costumes you talked about, I have seen them in some costumes. And when I'm talking about being all in for kids, he is all in. I've seen him as a butterfly. I have seen him as a bug. I have seen him, I mean dinosaurs. So David and I started off, I was twenty-five years with hospice, and David was soon after that. We were buddies one-on-one with kids in groups, age groups appropriate, and then colors. And each of the groups did a talent show on Saturday night. Usually the adult buddies were very involved with that. So if they were bugs, we were bugs. I even shaved my head, like I grew my hair out and then shaved it while I was there because the kids didn't know that I shaved my head. So they were just like freaking out that I, they took a clipper to my head. I've seen David do things just as extreme, so I'm excited to see what he's going to do for us at the E C C. You do have some big shoes to fill, but I have confidence that you will, will do that. So congratulations. My position is going to be open for those who want to be on school board. I know there's a stampede at the door waiting to get in that line, but you have to get in and get signed up. You got to get down to the Board of Elections and get your packet. You're going to need your seventy-five-plus signatures, seventy-five qualified, verified through the Board of Elections. So I recommend a hundred and twenty-five or so. So please apply for that soon because you have to like them.
Don't ask them.
I think it's, it's Thursday, July. Oh, it's August night. You get to August night to get those signatures turned back in. I've had a couple of parents ask me about those questions, so there you go. You've got it. Also, something I was watching in the news this morning. There's a bipartisan movement for the social media giants to start putting parental controls on social media. That's a great dandy, you know, but the social media, the monitoring of it, the, the involvement and it comes to the parents first. So I have to ask you to please, please cut that screen time down with the infants and the littles. Please watch those sites. There's a lot of good stuff that comes out of there, but there's also a lot of bad stuff. And screen time is proving to be not so good. So even though they're going to put those parental things on it, and there is a big push, a big bipartisan push, which is not usually played right now in government, but it takes the parents to be involved, so please be involved. So community, thank you.
Okay. First of all, would like to congratulate our Val Victorians and Slutorians. Aya and Ashley, conduct and everything. It sounds like you've got everything going in your direction. So it'll be a lot of fun to watch you go on to school and get into your careers. I'd also like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Conger. You know, we'll have to find a frozen outfit. Yeah, that's the thing.
We've been, we've even sang the song together.
Yeah, you can do this. Yeah, I know, I, I have.
I don't believe you.
I'm sure you can do this. So that's the thing. Maybe not the slippers, but you know, we, we, we're trying something. The, as all of you know, I am usually with the bus drivers because I'm on field trips with the tennis team. And one of our, our drivers, she had asked me if I could recognize some of our students. And I said, why, of course I can. So I had this letter that she had written, and it's the, the superstar children are Jatia McPoy, Kyra Grant, Evelyn O'Brien, and Riellen Willis. And her letter is, I would like to give recognition to these children for being brave, amazing, courteous, and helpful. Or courageous, I'm sorry. They were completely glad to help. We had an emergency situation on our trip to take them home. We came across a gentleman that had tipped his motorized scooter over and was laying on the road. These four children got off the bus with me. And as I helped the gentleman up, they helped get his scooter back up straight and on the level ground for him to get back upon it. The kids were calm, caring, and so willing to help. I just wanted them to know what a wonderful thing they did, and I am so proud of them. And this is our bus driver, Tiffany Barton. So it just so happened that this person was related to one of our staff. And they had found out and, and took care of it, and he is fine. But this is a reflection on our kids and, and our driver. And she stayed with me in Gail Force winds and kept us all warm today. And that leads me to my tennis team. I have five seniors, and I am very proud of the entire team. We have eight on there. They have gone above and beyond. One of them snapped a string, which is another reason why I don't play in this kind of weather. But the other one said, hey, I've got a racket. We're good to go. I'll give it to you. You can use it. So they are without a doubt a great group of kids. We originally were supposed to have senior night on Monday. And if you remember correctly, it was monsooning outside, and we did not get to have that. But thankfully, the Wayne team has rescheduled for this coming Monday. Hopefully we will have a great weather and they will be able to have their senior night. And we have sectionals on Tuesday at Centerville. They're all excited about it because I have completely redesigned the team and have a quote, "dream team first doubles." So they, they're excited about playing in different spots and moving forward, so it'll be, it'll be fun to watch them. And before I, I get done here, I wanted to congratulate Mrs. Sheeman on her retirement and to enjoy herself immensely. So other than that, I will pass it off. There you go. Thank you.
I'm going to echo what everyone else has said and welcome David Conger to our district. Thank you. And I also want to congratulate the two very intelligent women that have become our Val Victorians and Slutorians. Having a GPA of beyond five, I've never even heard of that before. So I am tremendously impressed that we have two highly intelligent women that have accomplished above a five point O GPA.
All right, wrap it up for us. And I certainly want to obviously congratulate the students. They are just amazing. Every year when we see the two top GPA winners of our district. There are some districts who, for whatever reason, have chosen not to necessarily choose their two top students and give them that honor, but I totally support us continuing to do that. I think it's a tremendous honor. It certainly helps you when you're, when you're moving beyond high school to, to college as well. But definitely part of those girls and the senior spotlight that Mr. Ivey brought to us tonight, appreciate those kids too. And obviously, they were not here because they were busy doing what they do. So we certainly appreciate them taking some time to answer some of your questions for him. Mr. Conger, welcome, sir. We, as you've heard, we all miss Miss Sheeman. I'll be the next to admit that. But, you know, time for something new, and I know that you'll have, you have an almost brand-new building to, to kind of get activated with and three grades of students. So we, we're certainly looking forward to how you're going to, to make this place your own and look forward to what that looks like. As Joe mentioned a minute ago, just to kind of reiterate, I'm going to, I think I'm going to mention this date between now and August because if you are thinking about running, at some point you're probably going to watch this. So at least during the meetings, if we keep reiterating, August the ninth is the deadline to submit filing paperwork, which includes signatures, to even be on the ballot. Maybe you'll hear that and it'll register. But August ninth is the deadline. So you have a little beyond that date if you want to be a riding candidate, but that's a tough way to get elected. Nate did it, but it is a tough way to get elected. Having yourself on the ballot so people can see your name is easier. So we certainly encourage it because we don't miss Joe. We need somebody to sit there. If nobody runs, then that means the board has to put the position out there and the people have to apply. And we appreciate all of you did that for us last year when Precious Dawn Henry passed away and she took his seat. But we don't want to do that. We want people to step up and go through the task of getting themselves on the ballot and being voted on. So we encourage people to do that. Any of us can help you. You want to call us? We are certainly going to answer the call, right? All right, I think that is it. Well, I was going to ask what the, I won't though. I was going to ask what the, what the P four K, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to let Maddie tell me. I'm not going to ask and somebody tell me. I'll argue that, so.
She's very excited.
All right, so that's it for us. We'll, we'll go ahead and have a motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Cox, yes. Ms. Harvey?
Yes.
Mr. Guwelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Muddy?
Yes.